All right. Good evening, everybody. Before we start, the City Council just met on one closed-session item, and I'd like to report out that the Council acknowledges the appeal has been filed. The Council goal has been to seek guidance from the court as to legality of the flying of the earth flag on top. We will continue to seek that guidance through this friendly litigation from the Appeals Court. During this appeal period, the Council does not feel comfortable reordering the flags as it would be against a written court decision by a local judge. This motion was passed for one vote. Thank you. All right. Well, good evening, and thank you for viewing the July 17th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference via Zoom. I'd like to open with a land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. And now, if you'd like to, please join me for the flag salute. Will the City Clerk please call roll?
Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Vice Mayor Stillman?
Present.
Councilmember Shaffer?
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
All present.
All right. The next order of business is ceremonial matters, proclamation recognizing July 24, 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month. And Councilmember Shaffer will read the proclamation.
Okay. Recognizing July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month, whereas Parks and Recreation makes lives and communities better now and in the future, and whereas it is established through statewide public opinion research that 98% of California households visit a local park at least once a year, two in three households visit a park once a month, 50% of households participate in an organized recreation program, and most park use is with family and friends. And whereas Arcata has emerged from the COVID-19 pandemic to offer full recreation programming, support for more special event activities than pre-pandemic levels, and construct a variety of significant park improvement projects such as Redwood Park, Bloomfield Park, Carlson Park, and the Arcata Marsh and Wildlife Sanctuary. And whereas residents see youth recreation programs as an opportunity for young people to develop artistic creativity, social connections, self-esteem, and lifelong health and learning, which all help reduce local crime and mischief, especially during non-school hours. And whereas residents value our local parks for access to outdoor spaces as a place where everyone can play and be active, exercise, enjoy group sports, and have access to the serenity and inspiration of nature while preserving and protecting our natural, historic, and cultural resources. And whereas the residents of Arcata, including children, youth, families, adults, seniors, businesses, community organizations, and visitors, benefit from the wide range of parks, trails, open spaces, sports fields, tennis courts, facilities, and programs, including community-wide special events, camp programs, and health and wellness opportunities provided by the Recreation and Parks Division. Now, therefore be it proclaimed, the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month, and the Council reminds our community that parks make life better, and urges all of its residents to enjoy Parks and Recreation's benefits of enriching our lives and the experience of our visitors while adding value to our homes and neighborhoods. And that is dated July 17, 2024, and signed by Mayor Matthews. And Sheldon Heath should be accepting this. He is our Parks and Rec Committee Chair.
I think I'm also giving overview of the annual report, but I just wanted to thank staff and the Council for supporting Parks. It really means a lot to this community. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. And while you're up there, we would love to hear the annual report from the Parks and Recreation Committee. And again, this is the Committee Chair, Sheldon Heath. Thank you so much.
Great, yeah. So, once again, my name's Sheldon Heath. I've been a member of the Parks and Rec Committee for about 15 years now. Most of what's on, what I was going to say was just said, so I'll keep this nice and brief. Once again, I'd love to thank the Council for your longtime commitment and support of the Parks and Recreation opportunities that this wonderful community of Arcata offers. Thank you so much. This annual report is truly an amazing document. It's extremely thorough, extremely detailed. It's got a little bit of fun in it, too. And every year, the Committee is just absolutely astounded at the amount of work that goes into producing it. So, if you haven't had a chance to thank your city staff lately for their tedious work going into these kind of documents, this is my little reminder for you guys to do so. Thank you, Emily. Thank you, staff, for all the work that goes into these things. So, I'm sure you've all had a chance to read through this, digest all the information. And I could go through, and I could point out a whole bunch of really cool stuff like the new playground and pump track in Redwood Park, the ongoing construction of Carlson Park, the call for public art that resulted in some sweet designer fire hydrants, the completion of the jump trail and Bloomfield Park, all really exciting stuff. I could also remind you guys about the need for funds to maintain all of these new projects and to repair some of our more well-loved parks in the community, and the facilities, and the funds needed to continue to grow and add new parks as our wonderful community grows. But I really just wanted to mention one specific thing, and you can find that in the Arcata Recreation Division's motto, "Creating Community Through People, Parks, and Programs." Creating community. That's really what I think the Parks and Rec Committee sees as the crux of their mission as a committee. So, the section I wanted to point out in this report was the section titled "Collaborations and Community Partners." It's a wonderful list that really highlights the relationships between Parks, Recreation, and the community. And it doesn't even mention all the pickup games played at Shea Park on the basketball courts, the hide-and-seek played at Redwood Park, the quinceañeras under the Larson Park gazebo that we see out there all the time. Parks and the facilities associated with them really help to create a community. And I just hope that when the Council is making decisions that affect our community, that you ask yourself, "What about the parks, and where are the parks?" Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Questions?
Oh, I just wanted to say it was really cool to see all the kids out at Laurel Tree Charter School out in Valley West doing the Explorer Camp Park. So, it was a lot of joyful faces out there, and we're really excited about ongoing public art out in that particular neck of the woods, if you will, North Arcata. And, yeah, I like the pop-ups. Really looking forward to some more pop-ups, too. So, yeah, thank you all for the wonderful programming that you do.
And it's fun to see skateboarding camp going on at Skateboard Park, which I saw. So, I think it's pretty cool to have all these different activities going in our different parks, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thanks, whole Park Department. Thank you, Emily. And give a special shout-out to Cullen. Thank you for being so awesome. I really appreciate all you do. So, thank you. 15 years, that's amazing. Thank you so much.
We appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's move along to Council and Staff Reports. Are there any staff updates?
Not tonight.
Okay. I know that it has been a while since we've all been together, so if there's any Council member updates that they'd like to make, go ahead.
I wanted to say congratulations to our Community Development Director, David Loyah, for the very competitive HUD Housing Grant Award. So, that's super, super exciting. Looking forward to that. Let's see, what did I? I've attended the Arcata Marsh cleanup, and it was a really successful cleanup that was put on by Humboldt Pet Supply. I also attended today the city's homeless housing working group, and there are some grants being applied for. We're working towards funding this year's extreme weather shelter. Arcade Health Partnership also started back up a food pantry out in Valley West. Let's see, on a disaster preparedness front, I'm still limping from this last weekend. I attended a three-day Arcata Community Emergency Response Team. So, I am officially cert certified and will be attending an Arcata Neighborhood Preparedness Meeting this Thursday. A lot of folks came from Cal Poly Humboldt. It was really exciting to see such a broad demographics. But in particular, we had a lot of students, various neighborhoods in Arcata were represented. We also had a fairly good group from North Arcata. On a related note of North Arcata, I was invited by the Wiat Tribal Leader, Michelle Vassal, to talk about North Arcata on their K-Mud radio show, Diskama Humboldt, which means "we love Humboldt." It was an honor to talk about North Arcata and Valley West, as many of you know. This is my passion. And let's see, upcoming, I will be attending the city as a city liaison, the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission next Monday, and I'll be reporting on about that next meeting. And maybe at the end of our meeting tonight, we could just take a few minutes in silence for the loss of four Valley West residents in the past month from our homeless community, month and a half. So, that's all I have.
Well, lots happened, and I've done a lot, and we'll just leave it there.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm, once again, have the honor of serving as the Chair of HWMA Board for the next year, and that's pretty much it. I am going to be absent on the August 18th meeting to attend the Democratic National Convention as a delegate, so that's pretty exciting. But, yeah, that's all I have to report out at this time.
Thank you. So, as does often happen in the summer, some of the meetings do get canceled. So, the HCOG meeting for July is actually canceled until August. I did have a CalCOG meeting earlier in the month, which was good, and just wanted to thank the Chamber and community members for coming together for two really great events that we had, Oyster Fest at the end of June and Fourth of July. It was, those were both really amazing community events, and there were, there were people, lots of people from out of town, and I had the experience of talking to folks who were just so impressed, they just kept talking about the vibe of Arcata. And I think just having that many people together in a space and having it be just so positive and with, you know, really very, very few, if any, incidences, is pretty impressive to people from other communities. I think we take that for granted sometimes, but we do have a pretty amazing community. So, that's it.
I also did not get to have a Redwood Coast Energy Authority meeting this month, as, yeah, summer, people are traveling, we get a lot of meetings canceled. But at our last, I guess we haven't been here in a while. So, at our last meeting in June, we have a really cool rural electric vehicle charging grant program going on right now, and so we approved contracts to start construction on some of those out in Orleans, Redway, Ann Garberville, and then also Fortuna and Eureka. But really far-reaching networks now for rural vehicle charging, which is great. And as part of this project as well, we're going to see, though we haven't found, had a bid for those ones yet, but new vehicle charging at both Mad River and Carlson Park as well. So, we'll get to see some benefits from that here in Arcata. And then also, at the end of June, Stacy and I had the opportunity to attend the film showing of The Big Yellow Bus, which was the movie, and I know there's some people in this audience that were there, too, the film that was made about the first trip to Kamwapa and the creation kind of of the sister city. And so, that was kind of to get people excited about the Eye Lock Party, which is going to be, as always, on the Monday of Labor Day weekend, so it's going to be on September 2nd coming up. So, I will continue to remind folks about that, but that's all I have.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right, that brings us to early oral communication. The City Council values your comments. The public comment period allows people to address the Council on matters that are not on the agenda. This early section of public comment is limited to 15 minutes, and speakers are limited to two minutes each. If you prefer to have a full three minutes of time for your public comment, this item is continued at the end of the meeting under Item 13, where speakers are granted three minutes. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the Council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda. The Council may respond to statements. There will also be time to provide public comments specific to each item when that item is being reviewed by the Council. So, if you'd like to participate in early oral communications, please make your way to the podium. If you are on Zoom, raise your hand or press star nine if you are calling by phone. We will not be going back and forth, so come on up to the podium. Okay, it looks like people would prefer to wait till the end. Is there anybody on Zoom? All right, I will go ahead and close early oral communication. And that moves us on to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, Council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. No. City Council members can remove items from the consent calendar, and then there will be an opportunity for the public to make public comment on all items of the consent calendar. So, here we go. Let me take a water. A is approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of May 28, 2024. B, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of May 29, 2024. C, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of June 5, 2024. D, approve the minutes of the City Council's special meeting of June 5, 2024. E is bi-weekly report on disbursements. F is award a contract for the 2024 Timber Harvest Logging and Log Hauling to Ford Logging Incorporated, DBA Pacific Earthscape, in the amount of 335,000 board feet MBF for logging, 116 MBF for trucking to Corbell, California, and $187 MBF for trucking to Piercy, and $47,000 for the replacement of one bridge and repair of one road crossing, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. G is approve the Arcata Community Forest Trail 9.5 project. H is award bid for the 2024 Timber Sale of Redwood Logs, $1,450 MBF to Kelly and Gina Payne, DBA KP's Custom Milled Redwood Douglas Fir Logs, $570 MBF, and Western Hemlock Logs, $405 MBF to North Fork Lumber, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. I, adopt Resolution Number 245-03, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata adopting the Cal Home Mobile Home Ownership Program Guidelines. J is adopt Resolution Number 245-04, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata ratifying the final ballot measure language for the general municipal election to be held November 5, 2024. K, approve the memorandum of understanding MOU with the Humboldt County Associations of Governments, HCOG, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents pertaining to the MOU. And L, approve Dial-A-Ride Funding Agreement for the City of Arcata for the fiscal year of 2024-25, in the amount of $97,605, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Any Council members wish to pull off any of these items?
I don't want to pull it, but I was hoping that we could come up with something better than 9.5 project for the Arcata Community Forest Trail.
Nine and three-quarters, like Harry Potter. Oh, my gosh, are there more? Oh, my goodness. I'm so sorry. There's more. Okay. M, adopt, thanks, Alex. Adopt Resolution Number 245-01, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending the Class and Play Resolution Management, Mid-Management Confidential and Appointed Employees to Reflect New Position, and adopt Resolution Number 245-02, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, establishing and authorizing supplemental compensation and benefits for management and confidential employees to reflect new position of equity Arcata manager. N, authorize the city manager to enter into real property negotiations for a portion of Assessor's Parcel Number 507-362-055. And O, award a contract in the amount of $3,000 to GHD Incorporated to author a Climate Change Analysis Addendum for Little Lake Industry Site Phase II Environmental Site Assessment Report, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Now, would any Council member, I'm out of practice, would any Council member, are we still good? All right. I'm going to open it up then for public comment. So, three minutes if anybody wants to make public comment on any items on the consent calendar.
Not seeing anybody.
They're just getting ready.
Oh. I see no one moving, that's why. Apologies, because it's been a while since these new meeting order and things happened. So, when consent calendar happens, we don't ask the public if they want something taken off the consent calendar? That's not permitted anymore? Okay, a lot of things are not permitted anymore. Okay. I am just curious about the parcel, real property negotiations. If somebody could just clarify, sometimes with all these parcel numbers, I don't know where it is or what's happening, and sometimes it just, I didn't have a chance to get that far in the agenda packet. So, can somebody just specify what's happening on that parcel of item? So, whenever we're dealing with, you know, negotiations on property, it's interesting to know where it is and why we're doing it. So, and. It's number N.
Are there any more public comments? Okay. So, to clarify, yes, we did make just the consent calendar available for the City Council to pull off reports, the idea being that constituents could reach out to us before the meeting and engage with us, so we could answer those questions before the meeting. But since this is like the first or second time, can we just have a brief staff report on, just super brief?
Yeah, I'll just share, the parcel that's on here that we're asking for authorization to negotiate on is a parcel out in the Valley West, Valley East neighborhood. I think a lot of people in the community know we have a grant that we will be engaging the community on a community center planning process, but the Council has also asked us to explore any and all possible potentials as they come up for that. So, this is very, very preliminary, but it would be just engaging with somebody who could be a new property owner in that region, just to make sure if there are any possibilities for that to be a site that we explore those now. But very preliminary.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on Zoom? No. All right, then we can entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Shaffer, and a second by Councilmember White, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right, consent passes. All right. So, we are moving on to old business. Old business is to consider approval of Gateway Area Plan, Gateway Code, and the Program Environmental Impact Report. So, Vice Mayor Stillman and Councilmember Atkins Salazar will be recusing themselves from this item. We will give them a minute or so to do so. Thank you, ladies.
And I'll just mention, the beginning part of the presentation will go through process. So, Vice Mayor Stillman and Councilmember Atkins Salazar, I just want to make sure to listen to that portion, then we won't have to redo that when we come to the general plan.
All right, Deputy Director Loyah, can we have a staff report, please?
Yeah, good evening, Council. Before I jump into the staff report, I just wanted to acknowledge the Community Development Department's staff. Many people are here, many of them are here tonight, even though they aren't required to be, because they're so committed to this process that they've volunteered to attend and show up and see how it all ends up and watch the, you know, the fireworks at the end here. And, you know, just wanted to recognize, you know, that, you know, it's my extreme pleasure to be sort of seen as the figurehead for this team. I appreciate Councilmember White's recognition of the HUD Pro Housing Grant and, you know, giving me the honor of that recognition, but it really was a team effort. Many people on our team worked on that, and it's not just the grant itself, it's all of the work leading up into it. And so, I just, I have the benefit and pleasure to work with an amazing team, and couldn't have done this without them, for sure. Also, just want to acknowledge the efforts of GHD and Plan West, who, you know, provided tons, tons of technical support for this. So, I know there are lots of people, many members of the community, other entities that have supported this effort, all the folks that have been there through thick and thin, but oftentimes the staff don't get mentioned, so thank you for indulging me there. I do have a PowerPoint to go through tonight to help keep us on track, and I'm going to kind of skim over the surface of a lot of this process stuff. You'll appreciate the wisdom that I've gained in my career, because the first EIR I presented on, I went through about an hour and a half presentation to explain all of the nitty-gritty details to the Council. I'll spare you tonight. Tonight, the three of you who are not, excuse me, tonight, the three of you who are not recused will be looking first at the EIR certification. So, that would be adopting Resolution 234-47, which incorporates the draft and final EIR, the mitigation monitoring reporting program, the statement of overriding considerations that you've reviewed previously, and that action has to happen first, so that resolution would be adopted first. Next, follow-on action to that would be to adopt the Gateway Area Plan through Resolution 234-48. And then finally, to introduce the Gateway Code, Ordinance 1569, rather. That will be this item that we're doing right now. And then the next item will be to bring in the general plan, and we'll adopt the balance of the general plan absent the Gateway Area Plan with Resolution 234-49. So, that's a lot. That's been literally eight years of work to get to this point. At your next meeting, we'll bring the Gateway Code back for adoption. Ordinances have to be read twice, so this will be the second reading, and that'll be adopted at that meeting. But then there are several future actions, several follow-on actions that we need to do. The Community Benefits Program, that's part of the Gateway Area Plan, we'll be bringing that in the course of the next couple of months. We've done a lot of work on it already, but we need to finalize a recommendation. The Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance has been a key piece for the Council. The Planning Commission's already looked at a draft of that and made some recommendations. I anticipate that to be a topic of discussion for your study session coming up. There is the Citywide Zoning Update, which is luckily, thanks to the HUD Pro Housing, going to happen sooner rather than later, those funds will help us to update our citywide zoning code to be consistent and compatible with the general plan that you'll be adopting. And those funds will also help us to adopt form-based codes and other infill opportunity zones. We have enough money for two, we might be able to squeeze that out to three, so I'm suggesting Valley West and Downtown as sort of the next two. And then that, those fundings, that funding source will also help us to update our accessory dwelling unit ordinance and develop a financing program. Okay, so that's kind of the process that's going to lead us to, through all these actions and the future actions that you'll be looking forward to. So, in this section, we'll be looking at the Gateway Area Plan dated July 17, 2024, and the Gateway Area Code dated the same date. As with the May 29 versions, you know, I dated these the date that you'll be reviewing them, so I apologize if there's any confusion in the community there. But I want to walk you through what the versions that are online right now that you will have looked at to assess the direction that you gave. These documents do incorporate everything that led up to the May 29 meeting, as well as everything that you provided at the May 29 meeting for direction to staff. Now, when we did that direction, I took notes, and I provided those notes as attachments in your staff reports here to identify the topics, but I want to recognize that those were just quick notes jotted down, and then I used my understanding of what you said to try and convey that into these documents. And so, we're going to go through each of those changes so that you can say, "Yeah, you hit the mark," or "No, that's not exactly right, we need to amend it." And then I've got the opportunity for us to amend those in real time, so you can deal with all of that tonight. And we'll walk through an example right now. So, with the Gateway Area Plan, because it's the May 29 version, you'll see some that are existing tract changes that you saw in your May 29 meeting, but you'll also see, in addition to those, the new changes in tract changes. So, for example, in Implementation Measure G8 7.5, you'd made some changes that you wanted to see. In particular, you wanted to see a definition of woo-nurf. Those were included both in the Gateway Area Plan and in the general plan. This is Mobility Element, Page 2-50, and so we've added those definitions there. And here is an area And here is an area where, you know, I took notes, I tried to convey what I understood from the discussion, but I wanted to make sure there's an opportunity for the council to give us a little bit further direction. So I'm going to hit the pause button on the presentation and kick it back to council and open up that section. I've got a live editable version of the document right now. Whoops. Let's not do that.
You're right where I wanted you.
This is great, David.
And I'm just going to take a little break.
I've got David right there. Yeah. This is great, Director Loia. Thank you so much, because I think this is where everybody was really interested in drilling down. So Councilmember Schaefer, mind you get us started.
Yeah, I have some language here, just because I feel like there's like a lot of back and forth of like, I think that it's like, oh, yes, of course, this is what makes sense. And I talk to people in the community, they're like, actually, but, and I'm like, okay, I do see what you're saying about that. And so just kind of trying to come back to everything and rewrap my mind around it. But what I kind of added, because I was looking, yeah, exactly, at this one you have pulled up here, Implementation 7.5, because I feel like that's what we talked a lot about the last meeting, just to kind of like ensure that like, are we pursuing this idea of linear park? What's that going to look like realistically? How are we going to plan for that? And that obviously there's going to be a planning process for that. And so I just kind of changed the wording to say linear park and woo-nurf planning, right? Because those things should be done in tandem, because if we're going to look at this whole corridor, all the way from Samoa to Alliance, that there are areas of it that are obviously appropriate for there being more street-like scape, where there already is, like between 7th and 11th Street. But there's areas where there's probably never going to be a street, like between 11th and 12th, where it's just trail, or the areas that we want to preserve between Samoa and 7th to be, you know, linear park. And so, yeah, linear park and woo-nurf planning for L Street, initiate planning for a linear park and woo-nurf along L Street from Samoa to Alliance. And then I know, I remember we had the chart that looked at like timeline on that, but I don't, is there language, oh, okay, within two years, yeah, of adoption of this plan? The plan should include integration to areas of woo-nurf to access future development while preserving open space, or something like that. Plan should include integration to areas of woo-nurf for access for development while also preserving open space. And I feel like that just kind of gives an open enough thing that when this planning process does happen in two years, that there is a basis to be able to go forward and kind of say, okay, what do we want to see in these specific areas? What do we want to preserve? What needs to be re-thunk, redeveloped? So I'm willing to have some help wordsmithing this up a little bit if folks have other opinions about that.
Sure. So, yeah, you kind of covered pretty much everything that I was going to say. I guess I'm wondering, hearing a lot from the community about that it would go all the way from Samoa to Alliance, and we're thinking that maybe we would want to change that. Also, just talking about some of the areas that were cited as opportunities, and it was pointed out by a community member that our kid does not own or have the rights to create an extension of L Street on that particular location, which I guess is on page 39. On the draft, it shows the primary zone. So if you look at site reference B as in boy column, so maybe we could address that.
Can we then, before we move, can we go back to that, though? Because I do want to address that, you know, talking about then to Alliance. I mean, do we want to then just change it? Because in my mind, so I kind of can go both ways, because what I honestly think, well, I mean, there could be development of that property that has like the storage units on it and stuff. And so it's hard to kind of conceptualize, but also like there already is some pretty built-out housing kind of on that street, you know, between 12th going over towards Alliance there. And so it's pretty doubtful that there would be more significant, you know, development there, and then that chunk next to the data center, like it's all pretty, you know, greenway and parked through there. So I mean, I would be happy if, originally I thought people wanted it all the way to Alliance for like that protection, but now I'm kind of hearing from the public that maybe wasn't what folks were thinking. And so if we want to just say from Samoa to 11th, and then leave out the other chunk and just address that when, you know, that happens, and I'd like to hear from you guys on that as well. But I'm not, you know, tied to either choice necessarily, but I know it was brought up just with some of the thoughts about how realignment of the trail, or a different spur of the trail that could follow the rail corridor, and then how that would be designed for, and if that would be preserved as, yeah, a linear park and open space within that chunk. And so maybe I'm getting a little technical about like these little three-quarter blocks and what they could look like, whether they're a woo-nurf or a park. But that's just some of my thinking about that. And so I'd be happy to change it to 11th, if we want to just keep the woo-nurf in the section and look at it in the section where the road already exists.
So I guess I'm wondering if maybe we could clarify that maybe from 10th Street to 7th Street, and just to kind of rename this so that everybody knows where we're at. This is policy G as in Gary, A as in Apple, dash 6D. I guess the Alliance to Samoa, it looks like we're going to change that, would represent a thoroughfare, and ultimately, as pointed out by a community member, would be a couplet, and they were hoping that that language could be corrected so that the woo-nurf would be from 10th Street to 7th Street. So presently, there is a short shared driveway that exists north of 12th Street for the apartments, and that could easily be separated from the path with some type of protective barrier. L Street between 10th and 11th is already a woo-nurf style, since a ballard exists near the middle of it. And then beyond that, the open spaces would be sacrificed to new pavement. And the whole point of this is to not let it be a road, if you will, but very people, bike, pedestrian oriented. I hope I'm communicating what this constituent wanted properly, so.
No, I get that, but I don't think it's, I think that we still want to keep it kind of, I think that's like really, really specific, and like to keep it a little broader. I'm fine with Samoa to 11th, and including the language of linear park and woo-nurf and developing that, but as far as like getting so like detailed, I don't think.
And in my mind, like I have such a specific, because like, again, I live right by there. I walk this trail every day. I have a very specific vision of like what this could look like, but like, future councils are not going to be in my brain, and we might not be the people up here always, you know, deciding on what this is going to look like. And so to try to make it, you know, as clear as possible. But I think then just saying, initiate planning for a linear park and woo-nurf to L Street from Samoa to 11th within two years' adoption of this plan, because, I mean, and again, yeah, from 7th to 11th, you already have an existing road, and then to plan for that linear park space from 7th to Samoa is what makes sense to me.
I'm comfortable with that.
And are we going to keep moving forward or hear from the public in between?
I think let's get through all of this, all the tract changes, and make sure that we're all like set, and then we can open it up for public comment. And then if we need to come back, then we can, but I'm satisfied with the language now to 11th.
Yeah, will you change it from Alliance to 11th?
Okay, so Councilmember White, you've brought up two different policies. So on this one, are we good with this language, just stopping that at 11th?
Sure.
Okay. And then I think we go to what's going to be our page 40, David?
Are we going in order?
We are, but I think we should stay on this topic. On page 40, it's going to be that table, which I believe is your other question on this item, Councilmember White.
Thank you.
Yep, right here, down, down, a little further down, oh.
You're making me dizzy.
Yeah, shut your eyes.
Okay, cool.
All right. So I believe your question is in block B, this middle block. And the request is just to remove the words "and extension of L Street"?
Yes.
Is that it?
That's fine, buddy.
Okay?
Yeah, I guess in any other reference to the creation of a street at that particular location.
All right.
GA 6D, open space and conservation policies, page 62.
Would I be able to jump back to CM 5E-7, or?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
And just on this, to add again, some light wording, and all I really had to add was, because it says, establish a linear park with passive recreational amenities adjacent to daylighted segments of Jolly Giant Creek and along L Street, which shall be preserved and protected as a linear park incorporating woo-nurfs. And then I said, and open space for its entire length from Samoa. And then I guess if we changed it from 11th on the previous, we should change it to 11th on this.
Yes.
You're, I, David, I'll let you do the logical next.
Yeah. And that's actually really all that I had of like specific changes that I wanted to make, and then I just wanted to say, thank you for, to Joe Bishop and to the Fire Marshal for working on those updated codes for fire stuff, and that, I don't know if this could be added as like an implementation measure, but that's just that we maybe come back and revisit those and have a discussion about, you know, the efficacy of those codes in relation to what we learned from the standards of care coverage study that's happening. And, you know, just maybe revisit that when that's finished, or have a larger discussion once we find out more what we're going to do with that document after the Fire Department, and we are completed with that.
Yeah, I don't think we necessarily needed an implementation measure to do that. You're going to have a process associated with that locally here. You're also actually going to have a process associated with the fire codes that we put in the Gateway Code, because the Fire Department actually has to adopt them first. So they're not going to be effective in our document until the Fire District has done their work, sent them to us, and then we have a, you know, option to approve as they adopt them or to change them, and then there's sort of a process associated with that.
And just like anything else, that can always be revisited once new information comes to light. Awesome. All right.
Anything else on Gateway, or?
We're going back, was it CM 5E?
7. And, you know, I'm looking at perhaps not the correct version, I just wanted to, give me one second here, I've got too many windows open.
CM 7 is in the general plan.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
We'll take that one up when we get to the general plan.
I'm getting ahead of myself there.
Would, let's take public comment then, I think. Kimberly, are you ready to take public comment?
I guess we have one of the other concerns that had come up, were the setbacks and setbacks and the.
Can you turn your microphone on?
One of the other concerns that had came from constituents were the setbacks and setbacks on the parkways, and also just concerned, again, that maybe we haven't, that maybe we can do a little bit more. And perhaps, I don't know if that public member is here, because I don't have the right glasses on, but they might be calling in. So, yeah, let's turn it over to the public and see what happens.
Well, and I'll add, because I know you gave me this map, because this is what I had asked for in the last meeting, and it might be kind of hard to, you can't really see it in the tract changes version, but that has the enhanced setbacks. I promise they're in there. You can see them, they're right. Oh, yeah, okay, it is on that map. So I know that was one addition that we made, especially right on the, that linear park corridor we want to try to preserve, so.
Okay, thank, oh, my mic is still on. Okay, well, let's line up for public comment then. This is on the Gateway specific plan. We'll start with in-person and then move to online. We won't be going back and forth, so if you'd like to speak on the Gateway Plan, please get in line now. Thank you. You have three minutes.
Hello, the staff and councilmembers. First, I want to thank you for your interest and your effort to help designate the L Street Rails the Trails corridor as a linear park. I appreciate all your effort. I want to express my concern about the latest Gateway draft and how it will affect the L Street linear park. The latest GA draft shows a woo-nurf the entire length of Samoa Boulevard. You've somewhat addressed that, but not completely, so this is still very relevant. At the last Gateway specific meeting, May 29th, 2024, you instructed the staff to designate and preserve within two years, L Street linear, L Street corridor as a linear park with a shared woo-nurf between 10th and 7th Street. This is how L Street is presently configured, and as we spoke, between 10th and 11th is a ballard. And at the meeting, you gave instruction to lock down the pathway in the open spaces south of Samoa Boulevard, might be my interpretation on that. Open spaces, north and south end of the Real Street Rails the Trails corridor for the future linear park are in jeopardy of being paved over by new roads, and this is becoming more apparent with this discussion. At the August 22nd, 2023rd, council gave staff the, to, you know, direction to eliminate the KNL couplet from the GA draft plan and explore woo-nurf, as you talked about in linear park. The pathway can serve as an emergency access for 7th Street to Samoa and preserve these open spaces of linear park without paving over these open spaces and wetlands, and possibly, you know, you could widen that some without sacrificing all those, preserving these open spaces. With the addition of frontages from future developments will ensure the highest quality open space of our infill for the city of Arcata as a whole, for the travelers, and on the Bay and feature Great Redwood Trail. You know, presently, the form-based codes on page 16, July 17, 2024 version allows the Barrow District developer to deviate from proposed vehicle circulation, figure eight, GA draft, and active transportation circulation. Until you define this south area as a linear park, the Barrow District developer can propose a road deviating from a woo-nurf and relocating the bike path as stated in CM 5E 7. The future is always uncertain, but it is a disservice to the community members that were promised a linear park with the L Street Rails the Trails path intact and abandoning the two-way couplet to be left with uncertainty. As I stated in email, a woo-nurf from Samoa Boulevard to Alliance roads opens up the door for, through a fair couplet. At this point, that's somewhat closed, but there's still an issue with this open spaces being paved over. And I just ask you to make those more appropriate changes to both the figures and to the policies to reflect this, and I think that's going to be the best thing in the future for this park as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities, and on behalf of CRTP's more than 700 members and supporters, I am here to once again express our strong support for the Gateway Area Plan and the zoning code, and really our excitement that these documents are finally here before you for adoption. Way back in 2021, just after the first draft of the plan was published, CRTP sent this council a letter, and I'd just like to read a couple sentences from that. So back in 2021, we said, "This plan, as it currently stands, is clearly the most bike and pedestrian-friendly land use plan ever proposed in our region. Because many of our environmental impacts stem from transportation, and because the plan's proposed densities will allow much-needed housing development to occur without encroachment into the natural environment surrounding the city, we believe it's also the most environmentally-friendly land use plan ever proposed in our region." Well, I think all that's still true. There have been a lot of changes to the Gateway Plan since then, but I'm happy to say that from our perspective, most of them have been for the better. And the Gateway zoning code has been written and refined since then, and I think does a pretty good job of detailing how the plan will be implemented. I also want to say that a plan like this can not only make people's lives better, it can actually save lives. It can do that, for example, by facilitating more affordable housing and thus providing more people with the safety of a roof over their heads, by directing the development of safer streets. And not least, it can also help us do our part to reduce climate pollution. And not least, it can also help us do our part to reduce climate pollution and reduce the potentially catastrophic impact of climate change on human life. You know, that might sound like a little bit of hyperbole and probably not many people will give a land use plan credit for saving lives, um, but it is still true, I think. In a very real way, deaths from exposure or from being hit by a car or from heat or storms are planned deaths. And we're here trying to plan the opposite, trying to plan shelter and slow streets and a safe climate. And tonight, in this room, I think we should acknowledge that. I'm not going to get into the details of the plan. We've had almost three years of getting into the details and I'm sure we'll be revisiting some of them in the future as we make amendments and refine and fine tune everything. But tonight, I think is just a time to, to stake, to take stock of the accomplishment that the plan and the code represent. And I think we should be proud of that accomplishment and encourage you to adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
Good evening, Gregory Daggett. I'm going to go right to the findings of the City Council of the City of Arcata for the comprehensive amendment to the Gateway General Plans. Number one, findings of, the following findings must be made to review authority approved this project. Number two, the proposed amendment must not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, nor the welfare of the city. I'm going to point out safety. You have a grand jury report that's come out, fourteen pages, I believe it's asked you questions, so you haven't even answered the questions of that. So you need to address that. And also you had letters and presentations from the Arcata Fire Districts and, and in their presentations, they were in this chamber and they specifically said, do not build anything over at three stories at, at this time because they're going to put our lives in, in danger and the public. That happened here. And so that is a direct conflict with, with this is saying. So I don't know how you're going to get around that one. As far as com, other conflicts, conflicts with the land use element, which is part of the local coastal program nineteen eighty-nine, hasn't been updated. So now what you're doing tonight is going to be a conflict with it, specifically Coastal Act, Chapter Three, Article Six, six oh five two one. That has to do with scenic views. And, and I know this is an issue because of Snyder property that's been in the news. They had a problem, our staff down the street with it being two stories. So now you're going to, actually, on Samoa Boulevard, I put seven stories is going to block the complete view of the city. That's going to be a problem with the Coastal Commission along with, with, uh, Sea Land, with, uh, Chapter Three of the Sea Level Rise, Section Three oh two seven oh of the Coastal Act. And you want to know what the, uh, what the, uh, Fire District actually said tonight, what they wanted to put in this document? What we're asking the city to do is actually get out their typewriter and type in either in policy or in codes that they won't implement the four-story through seven-story floors in the Gateway area until such time the city and the district comes to consensus. That's directly from them. I also, they also said, I don't think the city planning and the city councils actually heard us, that we're spoken, but I don't think we've been heard. I don't think they come to the grips with the scale of what they're proposing and how this will affect the district and how it'll be funded and how that will, how that will be, um, in place. The Fire District does not have the safety equipment or the training to suppress fires or deal with a major emergency in these taller buildings. And this has been all quoted. They've also said from the standpoint of doing this later on, that they don't have confidence that you're going to do this. So, I mean, this is right in, uh, June fifth Mad River Journal. So there's quite a few statements, they don't have confidence of what, what you're going to do here. They want it all done right now. Unfortunately, it seems like you're trying to push this through. Thank you.
Thank you, Gregory.
Hello, good evening. This is Sherri Starr. Is my sign allowed? Okay. Clarify? Okay. Okay, thank you for considering the community in making these changes just now. So I'm trying to rapidly make changes to my speech. I would really hope that you would protect, um, Seventh Street to Samoa from the woonerth concept. And my concern is because of what it says in the Form-Based Code, the, um, Barrow District Master, Master Plan, Item C, Circulation, because it reads, the city may approve a master plan circulation system that deviates from Gateway Area Plan, Figure Eight, Proposed Vehicular Circulation, and Figure Nine, Proposed Active Transportation Circulation, upon finding that the deviation allows for superior circulation consistent with Gateway Area Plan goals. So that seems to just short circuit all of the work that we've done in trying to preserve L Street, the current path as it is. And thank you for considering the setbacks and step backs along L Street because that will make it wonderfully livable and walkable for more seasons of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
My name's Joanne McGary. I don't know what to say. This whole thing has been long, a long and winding road, um, that many of us were brought into later as opposed to sooner. And, um, some people spoke up and basically accused some of us of being something that we weren't in terms of nimby's and wanting sprawl, which was a false narrative from the get-go. I have long felt that, um, the history of this town, getting community involvement at the very beginning, um, would have been so much better. And I'm really afraid that we're going to be creating something that's going to take a long time to get rid of if we decide it's not the kind of thing that will work for our community. So I just want to basically close. I went to the Fire District Board Meeting last week and, um, I reiterate a lot of what Gregory said. You know, they were not consulted. The decisions were made by the city and the Fire District is taking the risk based on decisions of the city. So we all got to work, we talked about community. You know, community includes all of us, not just people in offices in this building or people on the dais or some special interests, um, out there. And it just, I hope that what comes to pass, save our city, three stories, functional rooftop, the Goldilocks effect, that will make us a thriving, safe, livable, healthy, um, community. High rises belong in big cities, not in Arcata.
Thank you, Joanne.
Yes, good evening. I'm Fred Wise with ArcataOne.com. A few points here. The, uh, I'd like to see the woonerth that's shown on Sixth Street be made into a greenway or a bike pedestrian path taken as a woonerth. There's no need for vehicle traffic on that little section that locked between AmeriGas and Buzz Mini Storage. It was designated as a pathway at one time, became a woonerth, but as I say, the only purpose for having that vehicles in that would be to have vehicle access onto L Street. And L Street shouldn't be a street at that point. Second, um, uh, I applaud the enhanced upper floor step backs for the three blocks on the L Street Corridor shown. I say, why not have it entire length of the L Street Corridor, have the enhanced upper floor step backs? It wouldn't change the development to the developers much, but it would add a lot to the linear park. In terms of the, um, woonerth designation, it has been my view that in August, you said there will be no new roads in the Gateway area. The woonerth on the L Street Corridor is four blocks from Seventh to Eleventh, plus a three-quarters approximately block between Twelfth and Thirteenth. That should be the limits of the woonerth. And I request you tonight to say that, not as an implementation measure, but to say it firmly, this is what we're doing. Make a decision, not put it off for two years. You can put off the planning and the design and the look and feel of the linear park and the woonerth, that's great. But as far as the actual location, that's it. Make that decision or don't make the decision. The, uh, there are twelve hundred signers to the petition, which views the L Street linear corridor as a car-free section, except for those four and three-quarter blocks. I don't see what the problem is. Further, I think that a lot of people will be disappointed if this is not declared tonight that, that the woonerth, the, the, uh, woonerth section is those four and three-quarter blocks, the entire rest of the section is a hundred percent car-free and will remain so. I have comments on the Gateway Code. I'm sure we'll get to them a little later. But, uh, in terms of this, this is the biggest single issue that we've experienced in this whole Gateway planning, as you know. It's been mangled from beginning to end about what is appropriate for this, this L Street Corridor, and now we have the opportunity to make it right. Do it tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Member and Staff. My name is Cody Freitas. I am the Business Agent for Operating Engineers Local Three, Adurica, a local resident up here. I wanted to come out here to support, to speak this on behalf for the support of Operating Engineers and the Humboldt County Building Trades, uh, for the support of the Gateway Plan. Uh, we have continued to support this. As, as a local, infilling is, is the way to go. Sprawl is what is going to be degradating our area, is going to take away from the community that we live in. So the, the continued communications that this body has had with the public has been amazing to see. The recommendations being taken to heart through individual communications and at the public hearings. And I hope to see that continue after this plan is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in person on Gateway? Speak now.
Good evening, guys. Thank you for having me. This is my first time being in here. I am a business owner in the community. Um, I have a exercise science and rehabilitation facility at the Stewart School Building, uh, across from Arcata High School. Recently Humboldt State, or Cal Poly Humboldt purchased, um, that, that building and they are now, um, moving everyone out of that, uh, building. So we have two years left. I was luckily able to purchase a, a building in Arcata, uh, the Life House Church off of Fifth Street. And, um, I just wanted to say thank you for working so hard to move this Gateway program forward. Um, the, the zoning regulations that are being passed through this, um, Gateway program are going to make it doable for us as a business to move into that area and provide, um, our services for the community to help, uh, rehab people and, and keep people moving well. So I just wanted to say thank you. This is something that is going to change our lives and the people that work under me and a lot of, uh, the people that are, um, are patients. So I just want to say thank you, appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Last call for anybody in person. All right, let's move to Zoom.
Uh, there are no online public comments.
Okay, I will bring it back to the council then. Could I ask a clarifying question? Absolutely. So I thought the fire protection being that it is citywide, we'd be addressing that in the general plan? Is it something that I should be addressing now?
Um, it's, it's also in the Gateway Code, the fire standards, is that what?
Correct.
Yeah. Fire standards are in the Gateway Code, so you'd be happy to address it now.
All right. Yeah, I, I guess I am concerned. I met with incoming Chief Chris Evans and the Arcata Fire District, um, Board President last week. And, you know, there are still concerns, um, as highlighted, and most of you have, I'm assuming have heard that the grand jury report came out. Even the city council needs to respond. We have ninety days, so I've already began my response. We're thirty days into that, so it's due, I think, third week of September. I know that they have been meeting with the Fire Marshal and our city and, um, Build Planning, uh, Department with Joe, and, and that's moving along. And I know that we do have our standard of cover coming, but it's not here yet, won't be here till probably the end of October. And I know that this is a living document and that there will be changes as we, you know, um, build those relationships with Cal Poly Humboldt, as we get the standard of cover in, and as state law also changes. But I still would like to see some language and, and as does the Arcata Fire District to somehow assure that there's either going to be no occupancy or that we're not going to build until we have a way to protect, um, those particular things. I'm going to read you the response and give me just one second and I apologize because I was thinking I was going to bring this forward during the, the general plan. All right, so the responses that, um, the Arcata Fire District have, uh, to the findings are, I'm going to bring for us. So the first finding was that the Arcata Fire Protection District can no longer invest in vehicle replacement, um, to fund new purchase, uh, engines. And the result is in high maintenance costs for old equipment in periods of time when engines are out of service. And so they said, you know, they agree in this, agree with this in part with this finding. The district has a vehicle replacement fund, um, that is sufficient for staff and utility vehicles, but district revenues are not sufficient to contribute enough for the purchase of an engine or an aerial ladder truck. A fire in the mid-rise residential dorms under the construction at Cal Poly Humboldt and the mixed-use buildings that are envisioned in our Gateway Area Plan would exceed the reasonable capacity of the Arcata Fire District and mutual aid partners. Staging for a potential fire at Cal Poly Humboldt campus during the recent protests involved bringing the Fortuna Ladder Truck to the McKinleyville Station at, uh, from, uh, McKinleyville and engines and firefighters from Sonoma County. Arrival of these resources would not be timely for an emergency event. You know, time is of essence and sure, we have mutual aid, but will they get here in time before it's too late? The finding number six, the Arcata Fire District with cooperation of the City of Arcata and Cal Poly Humboldt formed a working group and hired a consultant for the standard of cover, that's coming in the end of October. The findings of this study will guide the Arcata Fire District in developing procedures and standards for ensuring and improving, um, the Fire District public safety. And that, that was from the grand jury and of course, the Fire District have agreed in part with these findings. And, um, you know, what they point out is the standard of cover findings will provide a basis for the Arcata Fire District Board to recommend station staffing, equipment guidelines for the district. So it's just the whole argument of we're getting the cart before the horse. And we need to consider that there's, there's real lives at stake, not just those that are in the buildings, but our folks that are protecting those buildings too. Their partners or, you know, spouses, et cetera, their children are expecting them to come home. So the district constituents use voter-approved funding and that will ultimately determine the level of staffing that can be accomplished. City of Arcata, Cal Poly Humboldt, Humboldt County Zoning and Land Use Authorities will decide whether the policies and plans are within the district's service capacity. If Cal Poly Humboldt, the City of Arcata and Humboldt County approve construction and occupancy of the buildings whose height and mass exceed district response capacity, the district lacks authority to stop them. So they're concerned that we're going to move ahead and they're not going to be able to protect our buildings. I know that we've worked at this for a very long time. I, I know that we had talked about, you know, the final approval would happen sometime in August, uh, at our next meeting. And I'm really hoping that that will give us an opportunity for the district to bring in some language that we can put in there, um, so that the constituents, the district, myself and others, um, make sure that we are protecting everybody in here. There are more. I mean, it, it goes on. Yeah, I don't want to take too much time. Do read the grand jury report. The response to the grand jury report from the Arcata Fire District is online on their page. And, um, we also will be doing one in the next sixty days as well. So just want you to keep that in mind. And yes, indeed, it is a living document and yes, there's going to be updates, but their concern is before that happens, if somebody comes in and starts building, that we might be getting the cart ahead of the horse.
That's the crying baby that I, or the giggling baby I heard. It was, there we go. So do you have any proposed language that you would like to add? Is there a specific place where, where you want to add this?
Um, well-
What are we looking to add? Because I think-
Yeah.
I'm all about adding things tonight and, and changing what we need to change.
Right. So because it's summer vacation, I know that the Board President is out of town on vacation. When, when would we be doing this? Would that be on the seventh or on the twenty-first? And I apologize, my calendar's not open.
I mean, I think the intent was that you adopt these tonight. Uh, the Gateway, the Form-Based Code piece would be an ordinance, so that would take two readings, but you wouldn't, if you made changes at your next meeting, then you would then be reintroducing at that point.
So the language could still come?
Um, of course, you could always change these documents, but you would be changing again. I mean, tonight, if you took action on it, if you- I mean, tonight, if you took action on it, if you changed the language at the next meeting, then you would be reintroducing that ordinance. That would... Now, I will also, you know, mention that we will continue with the standards of coverage. That study will come before you. Those changes can certainly be made at that time. We do have a seven-story residential building being constructed here in Arcata right now, so that planning needs to be underway. We are working. New fire chief was here just this week. We will work to continue to partner to get their people onto that property to start that training. So, and I think there is a lot being done, and I think you will have a lot of opportunities to continue to work with them in the future, and if that requires change of the documents, I think that you can certainly do that at that time. One of the things that Director Loya said at the beginning of this meeting is that if the fire district is supportive of more stringent codes than are required by state law, which we do have in your current draft, they will need to adopt those as a fire board before we can implement really anything on that regards. So I think that really would be the first step, would be for the fire district to develop those and to pass those as an entity and share those with us, and then that would trigger for you a chance to revisit exactly the language that they're interested in.
Okay. Also, I received an email tonight at 6:27 from incoming Chief Emmons, and I don't wanna read a lot, I'll just read you the last. "The purpose of this email is not to attempt to stop the approval of the plan, rather, it is to express the concern we have from the fire district. As the fire chief, I look forward to staff, to my staff and working collaboratively with the City of Arcata to ensure we are providing the most appropriate levels of service with what is being planned, and that we are all committed to providing a safe community. With the discussions I have been able to have with the member of the city staff, many have indicated that as well." So I guess another thing that Eric Laudenschlager brought up was that the ordinance from 1974 is yet to be updated, so he was really hoping that we could have some kind of MOU between the Arcata Fire District and the City of Arcata, just to kind of delineate who's responsible for what. And I don't know when that could come, but that was another concern.
Yeah, so a couple of things. Number one, probably an MOU in this area wouldn't be appropriate. We wouldn't, would be inappropriate to give a fire district land use authority. That's the specific authority of the city council within Arcata. It's not within their charter or jurisdiction, so it just would not be an appropriate arrangement. Secondly, and I want to do this, I want to be very, very respectful in this. I want to really caution anybody who's sending emails to council members during meetings on topics, because they're supposed to come and talk in the public so that all the public can hear. And so I don't want to get anybody, like them in trouble and stuff like that, but they should not be sending emails and communicating about actively discussed agenda items during the meeting. If they want to participate, they have to come and participate in a way in which it's transparent with the public.
So I just want to address that, that he said everything that he's saying to me, he had already addressed. So there wasn't any new information? He was just responding? I think that he couldn't be here, because he says...
I just want to, I guess what I want to, I just want to be really clear, that the standard would be, once you go into a meeting, we kind of turn off the email, and that if there's any communication, they are able to get that to the clerk, and so that those items could be read to the public and distributed to everybody evenly. But I would be very, it's very concerning to have an outside agency emailing any council member on a matter that's actively being discussed about something they have a specific interest in without it being able to be heard by the entirety of the public. And so, again, I want to be really respectful, because it's, sometimes people make mistakes and they don't realize that they could be violating some rules.
And just to reiterate, he did say that everything that he has said has already been sent to you all.
That doesn't, that one, unfortunately, doesn't change anything.
Because I didn't receive that email. Just good rule of thumb is that you shouldn't check your email or your phone during a meeting.
And so, and so, and so I just want to say that only because you said about it during the meeting. So I just, again, very respectful, sometimes people don't know, and so I just want to ensure the sanctity of our process and keeping it everything public so that everything happens in the public eye, and there isn't any other communications. So, you know, with that, with that being said, as any, as anything goes through and is processed, the fire district is always gonna have the ability to provide comments to folks as the process goes. So if they have a concern, certainly we can never build something that's going to create an unsafe situation, you know, for people to live in. So, because we would have potential liability in that situation. So I don't really have legal concerns from that standpoint, because we would never walk into just liability for the city. And again, even with the Form-Based Code, they have the ability to kind of provide comments to it that, hey, look at, we don't have the equipment, we can't do it, there isn't mutual aid in that position. So anyways, I think that that kind of, as it relates to the MOU, that's probably not the appropriate vehicle. I think that there's really good mechanisms in place to ensure that their voice can be heard and any concern that they have are taken into consideration. From a liability perspective, we can't create an unsafe environment without creating liability for the city, so we wouldn't do that. And so I think that that's...
Having said that, I think that it's important to take into consideration that when you adopt a code that says you can build the five stories, then the building code is what the standard of liability is. If you build it to the building code, then we're covered from that standpoint. The other thing I want the council to be really clear on is that this concept of, you know, disallowing buildings over a certain height, even though it says in our code that you can go above that height until some such time at a later date when we cross some threshold, is just not going to work. The Housing Accountability Act would not allow you to prevent the development of buildings that are authorized in your code. And so if you want to limit it to three stories, you need to adopt a code that says you may not build above three stories. You cannot build, you cannot have a code that says four stories but then temporarily three. In fact, the Housing Accountability Act will not allow you to decrease what's already zoned for four stories to three stories. It just cannot be done. I know this is an issue that has, you know, captured our imaginations. The reality is that modern building code builds buildings that really don't catch on fire like that. They're sprinkled, you're not gonna have, you know, Chicago, you know, style blaze where these buildings are burning down. And the codes that are in the Gateway Code right now around fire, you know, these were developed in collaboration with the fire marshal and the building official, and they were determined to be reasonable, you know, steps that are cost feasible to ensure that egress from those buildings is enhanced to do those protections that, you know, that were requested from the City of Arcata. So I guess, I just, I don't want anybody to get into a situation where you adopt this thing tonight, and then you come back next week and you say, okay, let's insert some language that says, even though it says you can build the seven, we're gonna limit it to three for the time being. That's not going to happen. I want you to be real clear-eyed going into this.
I am really looking, I'm glad that we're having these conversations. I'm glad we're opening up dialogue with the new chief, and he seems to be very amenable to having these discussions. I also know that we already have seven-story buildings. I know that we live in a rural community that rely on mutual aid. I also am looking forward to seeing what kind of codes that the fire district adopts and have them, bring them to us and have a conversation.
Yeah, and just to add to that, you know, I don't think it is realistic at all to believe that we are going to see any occupancy in a Gateway building that is seven, over four, four or more stories by the time that the standards of coverage are, you know, like that's gonna be complete well before we would ever see any sort of construction or even occupancy of a building, you know, in the Gateway. If we look at how long it's taken Cal Poly to construct these seven-story buildings, which I would honestly say has seemed pretty fast, it's still been, you know, two, two years. So by the time that they will have any occupancy. And so I think that this, like, fear that, oh my God, it's gonna happen, and people are gonna be unsafe, and that they're gonna die in a multi-story building fire is really, really outlandish and unrealistic, and probably not gonna happen. And statistically speaking, you are extremely more likely to die in a single-family home fire, especially in this community with aging, you know, Victorians and craftsmen's that have, don't have updated electrical and are much more prone to catch fire and burn than, you know, a new state-of-the-art apartment building. And so, and again, to the point that the fire marshal signs off on occupancy of buildings, and if we were really in a dire situation where the fire department said there is no way we can help defend this building, then they're not gonna certify its occupancy and let people live in it. So I, I'm really excited, you know, with the new chief coming in. I think there's been a lot of positive direction of good work with our building official, with the fire marshal, with the chief, meeting with council members, meeting with city staff, working with community development. I think that there's a lot of energy behind that right now, and I think that, like, that is what we should be excited about, and I don't really think, you know, in my eye, it's something to stop this over. So that's why I am on that. Especially when we don't have any proposed, you know, and I feel like there's kind of been a back and forth from what I've heard from Community Development Director Loya, that, you know, as you said, yeah, they're on vacation, but we've been doing this for seven years. So that's, you know...
I'm comfortable with all the changes that we've made. I'm feeling good about this. I feel like we've spent a lot of time going over all of the changes that we wanted to make. We went point by point. We compromised. We've heard from the community. We've adjusted. Yeah.
So I just wanted to know, do we have any updates for that fire code that has been with Joe and the fire marshal?
It's in the Gateway Code.
The newest updates, everything, we're done?
Yes. Yeah, it's in the Gateway Code. I can show you the language that is in there right now.
But that's the, that's it? We're done with that update now?
Yeah, and I think what Karen was alluding to earlier, and I mentioned at the beginning of this, is that we've included this because of, excuse me, because of the way that state law requires amendments to the standard building code and fire code to be adopted, this will not be effective. We, when we met last time, I told you that we were waiting for the fire department to take action, and you directed me to put this into our code, even though we haven't had that action. This is in our code. It cannot be effective until the fire department takes action, sends that ordinance to us, asks us to adopt it. We can either adopt it as is or amend it. If they submit language that looks just like this, I would highly recommend we adopt it as written, and then it will be effective in our code. Similarly, and I know we'll talk about this in a moment, but with the citywide code, currently you can't really build a building over four stories. Perhaps if you had a density bonus project, you could. But the amendments to the land use code, the citywide zoning ordinance that we talked about earlier as a follow-on action, is when this language would be incorporated there as well. And so I think this is a, you know, a good step in the direction of trying to resolve the district's concerns. There are, related specifically to this issue, there are much larger concerns that I think that they have, that we are, again, through the standards of coverage, it's not just how many fire staff do we need, how many trucks do we need to respond to these. There's also a financial component. That was something the city brought forward to say, hey, look, let's figure out ways to improve the fire district's financial situation. And so, you know, I'm excited to see those, and I think that we'll have a whole new view on what the possibility is for the future when that does happen. But ultimately, we need the fire district to adopt this before we can make it effective.
And like Sarah, I too am encouraged with our new incoming fire chief seemingly wanting to build on the relationships and move forward, so.
So process stepwise, I did hear one comment about, you know, taking the Gateway Area Plan and then going onward to the Gateway Area Code. Are there any changes from the council?
From what I understood, this is all one.
Okay.
Oh, it's in the staff report.
Do we want to do the motions all at once at the end? Okay. Great, let's go on to code then.
I don't have anything to present. I've already presented.
The fire stuff I felt like was...
The changes in the code were removing the zoning administrators' authority at a four-story building that's shown here and the fire safety that was shown here. There are a couple of other minor, minor changes that aren't worth putting up on the screen, but they're all in there.
Okay, well, are we, are we feeling good, people? If I make a motion, are we feeling good?
I am, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to adopt resolution...
Just before you go, if I could just get you to add in your motion that we could conform any other cross-references to the changes that you've made tonight. This is to specifically address Councilmember White's direction around the changes that you made on the linear park, to make sure if there are any other references that we can update those as well.
Also, my name is Miss Feld.
We got that.
I would also, I would also throw in that there may be minor grammatical punctuation-type changes that we catch as we remove all the track changes that we're authorized to make those as well.
No, not really, but, okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to adopt resolution number 234-47, certifying. Okay, we don't...
It was one, all one?
All one item.
All one item, unfortunately.
Okay.
There's no point, no.
So just to be clear, there's no point of order from the public? It's only, it's only the council that gets to make points of order?
Again, yeah, so we went over, it's Consider Approval of Gateway Area Plan, Gateway Code, and Program Environmental Impact Report, and we took public comment on that section.
So I did have something. I was hoping that we could address...
Sure.
Okay, yeah, Fred had a concern about making a decision or not with regards to, can you repeat the verbiage for me there, Rhea? No.
With all due respect, this is, this is us. We've gotten Fred's emails.
So I asked, before we move forward, is there anything else within these three things that we want to address as a group right now? Because like, I covered the things that I want to address, but if there's other items that we want to specifically address on Gateway, now is the time.
And I would like to address the concern that was just brought up by one of the speakers on whether we could make a decision now as opposed to later.
What is...
About what?
The verbiage with regards, I think, Rhea, you might have gotten it, was, I wrote it, I'm sorry, I've got it all over in here. Give me one second.
From my understanding, this is all one agenda item. Consider Approval of Gateway Area Plan, Gateway Code, and Program Environmental Impact Report. All one title, all one motion. That is what it is. Go ahead.
Well, but if there's things that you want to talk about, let's talk about them. I want, I want to talk about them. Now is the time. So please look it up if you have it in your notes. That's fine. I can, we can wait.
Can I recommend the two, is there a one or two-minute break so everybody can gather their final thoughts and stuff like that?
All right, two-minute break.
Okay, thanks.
About this all being one agenda item, I'm going to reopen public comment for two minutes to talk about the form base, to talk about code. So if you have anything to talk about the code, let's come up and do it.
And if I could, if you have anything that's in the recommendations on one through five, this will be the opportunity to address it because there won't be another bite at the apple. So it's not three minutes for each item. So it's anything that's listed in the recommendations on one through five, this would be your last opportunity to speak.
On the code, yes.
Thanks for the clarification. And I'll take a minute of my time just to say, I thought that once it was stated that there would not be any presentation, it was time to speak. And that was what I was trying to get at. And on that point, James Becker, and I just want to refer back to under circulation, under two within the Form-Based Codes, which states in the master plan, "The city may approve a master plan circulation system that deviates from the Gateway Plan Figure Eight Proposed Vehicle Circulation and Figure Nine Proposed Active Transportation Circulation upon finding that the deviation allows a superior circulation consistent with Gateway Area Goals." This is my greatest concern by just leaving this wide open on those open spaces. This is what I'm stating, and I believe will be the end result of this, that that will be paved. And this is why I believe that it's important, at this point, you can revisit this later, but I believe that at this point it should state that the Wunner F is from Seventh Street to 10, or possibly 10 and a half. And that's honestly what I have to add at this point. Thank you for everything.
I'd point out that you're mixing up a couple of different issues here as far as readdressing code later with the fire district. The only thing they're going to address, this is coming from the fire district, is what's going on with the code inside the building. And you're making it sound like they have no jurisdiction with the four, five, six, seven stories at that point. So basically, this has been their issue, why they wanted this code added that I read earlier. So it's not that they can fix this. They're only addressing the stairways and how the construction of the building on the inside. They're not addressing the height of the building as far as what they need equipment from that standpoint. So you're not really addressing that. So once we pass this, there is no coming back to this. It should be done now. And I would point out that in the last meeting when we brought this up, we were supposed to have a number of meetings to go over this and work this out. And somehow, all those got canceled. And now we're here just making a vote. So you didn't even follow through with what you said in the last meeting from the standpoint that there was going to be time for discussion to work it out so we could get the wording just right, so that if you want four, five, six, seven stories, that that could be done in a proper manner. This is not a proper manner where you're not waiting for the standards of coverage, number one. And it's not proper from the standpoint that you're not waiting for your coastal commission to rule on these different zones. So again, I would ask you to go back to what the fire district quoted in quotes in a number of newspapers. And it seems to be that they've actually asked us of you, but you haven't been very receptive from their standpoint. So you seem to be saying that you're working in collaboration for the last two years. And when they ask you to add this code, they claim that there's pushback, that they can't even come... They had a hard time even that January 10, 2022, that we didn't have our attorney there. He was someone, our old one.
Thank you, Greg.
Thanks for allowing this additional time. I also do have concern with the Form-Based Code, Beryl District Master Plan, Item C Circulation, that it reads, "The city may approve a master plan circulation system that deviates from Gateway Area Plan Figure Eight Proposed Vehicular Circulation and Figure Nine Proposed Active Transportation Circulation upon finding that the deviation allows for superior circulation consistent with Gateway Area Plan goal." This could be just about anything, and you could basically drive a truck literally and figuratively through our planning efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri.
Yes, good evening. One small item on the EIR. I think it contains falsehoods, which would leave the city open up to legal liability. I think the likelihood of someone suing on this matter is extremely small, but it does exist. They are known falsehoods. In terms of the code, I have an article in Arcata One that has 63 topics on the code that I think could use improvement. Some of them have been improved since that article's written, but I'll mention a few tonight. Tenant bike parking. The director told the planning commission four times, there would be inside the building bike parking. That is a false statement. There's actually no requirement that the bike storage be inside. It can be outside on the corporate roof. There's not even a requirement that it be behind a locked fence. That could be improved. Inadequate bike parking for restaurants or businesses. Restaurant the size of the pub, the size of the D Street Center that could have 150 diners. Gateway Code calls for five bicycle parking spots for 150 diners. Business, 5,000 square foot business with 30 or 40 employees, Gateway Code calls for one bike spot for those employees. Inclusionary zoning is now 4% very low, 6% low, 10% median. I will make the point that median income calculates to be about $1,300 a month for a studio, $1,500 a month for a one-bedroom, in other words, higher than market rate. Electric vehicle charging, Commissioner Peter Lehman tried to bring this up many times and it was dismissed. There is a clause in the general plan for this, but it's inadequate. There is no reason why we can't have at least some electric vehicle charging in the Gateway Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Do we have anybody online? All right.
May I address just one thing that the folks brought up about the language of changing the Figures Eight and Figures Nine in the Gateway Plan? The Beryl District is this area here, and there's a master plan called for for the Winkle Floyd property in particular. This is a cartoon of where roads could go without any thought for where buildings might go. And so that language is specifically intended to identify that this road network here and this trail network here could be modified based on the master plan, because we don't know what's going to happen with that more detailed planning at this point. There's no way, shape, or form where that road network amendment here would amend any other road anywhere else in the Gateway Area. So I just wanted to bring that up. In fact, I think most folks that spoke tonight would want this amended, because right now it's showing coming into L Street. And unless, and this is where the existing connection is with 15th Street, I'm sorry, with Fifth Street, unless there was a connection here, there may be no reason to have that be a main point of entrance. It could be that it comes down here. So just wanted to alleviate people's concerns. That's not going to change roads elsewhere or trails.
Thank you.
So I think with that, we're looking for a motion to adopt Resolution 234-47, Resolution 234-48, and introduce Ordinance 1569, recognizing that there would be potential modifications to clean up the connection between the changes made on L Street and potential grammatical changes that don't affect the content.
Great. So I will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 234-47, certifying the general plan and Gateway Code Environmental Impact Report, adopt Resolution Number 234-48, adopting the Gateway Area Plan, and to introduce Ordinance Number 1569, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending the land use code. Title IX, Planning and Zoning of the Arcata Municipal Code to Adopt the Gateway Code and Zoning Districts Throughout the City, wavering of the text and consent to read by title only and include those changes related to L Street discussed in this meeting and other necessary cleanups that need to be made to grammatical errors. That's the motion.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat the last part about any amendments?
Can Karen repeat it? She said it really well earlier.
It would be amendments to make consistency for changes that were made to L Street. Conformance with L Street. You want to give it a shot, Doug?
Yeah.
So adopt our first reading on those action items. In addition, conform any cross-references with the changes that were made tonight, and do allow to make any grammatical or type of changes, which we can do without even that being included in the motion. But it's just to conform anything to the changes that were made tonight.
So moved, affirmed.
All right. So we have a motion. Am I the only one who can second? I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
And I just want to add that this has been a very significant process of my time on council, and I've just really learned a lot from David and Jen and Delo and so many people in the Community Development Department that have taught me about planning and a lot of things that I didn't know before I started this position. And I'm just really thankful for their wealth of knowledge and how easy they are to talk to and what great teachers they are. So thank you to our planning department for all the work that they do.
And I'll add on to that, this was something that has definitely followed me through my whole time on the council, actually, three years today is my anniversary of being appointed to council. And yeah, I've learned a lot too, and I've also learned a lot about public input and the importance. And I just want to thank the members of the community that have been so tenacious. I think that we have really demonstrated that we've heard you through a lot of the changes that we have made. And I'm just really looking forward to this vision. A community is only as strong as the people that live in it. And so I'm really excited to see what happens. And so thank you.
I'd like to add that I don't have anything to add.
Excellent. All right. So welcome back, Councilmember Atkins Salazar and Vice Mayor Stillman. We will now move on to consider adoption of the general plan comprehensive update, with the exception of the Gateway Area Plan. And can we have a staff report from Community Development Director David Loya?
Yeah, I, on the Gateway, intended to walk you through all the changes, and then I was going to walk you through all the changes in the general plan. But it seems like you've done a lot of your homework. And so that's what a lot of this PowerPoint presentation is. I think I would like to turn it over to the council to direct the conversation. Before I do, I just do want to acknowledge the planning commission's efforts as well. There's a, I don't know, two or three pages worth of acknowledgements, because this document really does stand on the shoulders of giants. It was largely based on the General Plan 2020, and there was a lot of really good policy that was developed for that document. And so we've included the General Plan 2020 folks that worked on that document as well, acknowledging their contributions to this one, even though most of those people didn't directly contribute. But the planning commission did. The planning commission spent hours and hours and hours on this. And they were very dedicated and committed to their review. And so I just want to give a shout out to our current planning commission and commissioners who contributed and aren't currently on the commission.
Thank you for that.
Also, can I just add, if you're looking at the acknowledgements, it's really wonderful because Alex Stillman is vice mayor now, and she was vice mayor on the 2020, the 08-09 acknowledgement. So I think that's pretty cool.
Yeah, we planned it that way.
All right. Well, then I will turn it over to my fellow councilmembers. If anybody has anything on the track changes they'd like to talk about, let's do it.
Air quality, 2D. It's really weirdly worded. I kind of added some changes, because it doesn't really make, it was changed, and it doesn't really make sense the way it was written. It's about VMT. The way that it's, the current track changes is written, it says, "Design Arcata's highest traveled arterials to minimize vehicle miles traveled. Recognize that automobiles are most efficient and less polluting when driven less. Designing roads prioritize for alternative and non-motorized blah, blah, blah." And that part's good. But I kind of just propose maybe changing it to just say, "Design Arcata's highest traveled arterials to minimize vehicle miles traveled," and then get rid of that whole next part that says, and then just say, "Designing roads prioritize for alternative and non-motorized modes results in fewer vehicle miles traveled and offers alternatives to driving in personal vehicles," or something. Because that just doesn't make sense to me.
Way to go, teacher.
I didn't catch the last part.
And then getting rid of the part that says, "Considering the full scope of travel modes" at the end there, and then just changing it to say, "And offer alternatives to driving in personal vehicles."
Are we all okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
That makes a lot more sense to me. The wording was very confusing.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll come back. But that was my first one on top here, so.
Well, I only have one really small thing. Just in, it's PS14 on community policing. And I don't even know if you necessarily need to pull it up. But basically, we say, "Increase support for programs such as MIST." We outline MIST. And since we're not really sure with what we're doing with our mental health responses, I don't have a problem how it is written, but it might be better to say, "Increase support for programs for infield mental health response," or something to that. Just kind of take out, instead of calling out MIST specifically, just language that's a little more general with the same meaning behind it. So just like infield mental health response would be a way to replace it.
Vice Mayor Stillman, do you have any? I'm just going to go take one.
You know, I was concerned about, I don't have the number, because I forgot to bring it with me.
Hold on, they're still changing.
But if the one was dealing with downtown, I'm sorry. Who's talking?
Are we ready?
Not me.
Nope. Sorry. That was my bad.
So I don't have it with me, but it related to downtown. And I just want to make sure when we're thinking about downtown Arcata, it's one of our sales tax areas where we do generate sales tax, and that's one of the ways the city lives, is off of sales tax. And so I just want to make sure that we do not go forward about closing all the streets. We do do it for Farmers Market, but I don't want to see it happening. Well, we do it for Oyster Festival, Ferry Festival, all the events, but not on a regular basis. And so I think that will, wherever it is, it had a picture in it. The area had a little picture on the left... The area had a little picture on the left-hand side, and I can't scroll up this, so.
Yeah, I do think that making like a blanket statement of that would need a lot more public input before we...
Here it is, it says, "D to B."
Before we decide to like cart plant, I mean, yeah. And I know that we're revisiting a lot of things after the summer, but I definitely wouldn't want to like hamstring us into something without any public...
You could just add to that part, like the plaza and adjacent streets may be closed to vehicular traffic for special events.
Yes, that's a good idea, because I just know we don't have the built-in infrastructure. We don't have the number of people, we don't have the buildings. If the plaza had four, five, six-story buildings all the way around it, then you could really consider closing it down, because then you would have the built-in people to keep things viable. But at this point, that's not the way it is, and there are very few people. I can almost, I know where all the apartments are downtown, and I know how many people are in all of them, so it's not very robust. So I just want to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a situation that'll impair us as far as sales tax is concerned.
Well, and I do agree that, I mean, I know this was, this was one of the suggestions for the future in the Plaza, the Plasma Improvement Task Force, and I do agree with what was said about there would need to be, we'd have to, we'd have to know, we'd have to have the foot traffic to know it was going to be successful, and I think we'll know when we, when we start to see that happening. And also, there would need to be a lot of community engagement before making such a big change, so I'm, you know, that'll probably happen more organically over time, and I think we'll see that. And also, in the Parks and Rec Report, they did bring up to bring more programming to the downtown, and I think, you know, that's also what's important to have is more programming, so yes.
And I think once we move forward with a robust economic development program, we can start talking about, you know, what things on the plaza and throughout the rest of Arcata will look like.
Well, so, I know I'm not so, you voted on the gateway, so thank you. So now I can talk about it. So my feeling is, my feeling is that once the gateway, we see something happen there, you know, I have grandchildren that are in their twenties and I tell them...
If I could, Vice Mayor, one component of Gateway is, has only been approved for first reading and not approved at second reading.
I can't talk about it?
I would prefer you didn't.
Well, I was just going to say, if we, if the area around the plaza ever gets built up with additional units, whatever height they might be, then we will see a built-in body of people that will be able to utilize our plaza, they'll be able to utilize other places, and it'll be really important. Then when we have that, and then we can look at the uses that are in our downtown and what we can do. But until we have that force of people living in, within walking distance of whatever, it's going to be, it would be very detrimental. It would be the same for Valley West. I see as we get more buildings built out there, more people living there, we're going to see that we're, our infrastructure, our people going into the Valley West Shopping Center is going to become much more viable. We're going to have a lot more people using that. We'll probably see a shift in the kinds of businesses that are there as we have more and more housing built there, and I think that's going to be important, too. And so it'll be a transition. And, you know, I tell my grandchildren, they're in their twenties, you know? I didn't have grandchildren in the seventies when I was thinking about Arcata and how we were going to be moving along. And I feel like for us to have some of these buildings built, it's going to be, it's not overnight, and I feel everyone talks about overnight building, and we just know how long it takes us to get some of our projects done, and it's going to be, we know from the day you decide you're going to do something, if you don't own, if you don't own the land, you better not start thinking in three years you're going to be able to have someone live in it, because it's quite a long process. So anyway, I figure my grandchildren might have the opportunity, or their children, my great-grandchildren, might have an opportunity to see what's going to happen in Arcata in the future. This is, it's not immediate.
Thanks, Alex. Councilmember White, did you have anything that you want to pull out?
I was looking at CM 5E7, and it looks like the language did change, so I think I'm good.
Okay, Councilmember Schaefer, did you have any more things?
Just, I, yeah, no, I had a question about something in circulation, but I think it's the same one that Kimberly brought up, and that's, I'm good.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar? I'm going to open up for a public comment, and then we'll bring it back if we need to. So this is a public comment on the General Plan.
Good evening, Assistant Counsel, I'm Fred Wise. A big thank you to everyone who's worked on this, including all the staff, staff time, and Planning Commission and the committees. I also appreciate the acknowledgements. I'd like to thank the Community Development Director for including the long list of acknowledgements of people who contributed to this. Small item, Paul Patino's name is misspelled, Art Patini's name is misspelled. In general, you know, we have a good General Plan. I'm going to bring up one item, there are many items, but I'll limit it to one, and that is electric vehicle charging stations. This is expressed in Resource Conservation and Management Element as an implementation measure, AQ-6V. It's an implementation measure. It's, in my opinion, needlessly complex. Things could be much simpler. It's based upon a percentage of total parking spaces, and as we know, we're minimizing parking spaces. There could be apartments in the Gateway area that have zero parking spaces. And so having electric vehicle chargers based upon number of parking spaces is proper, in my opinion. There should just be a table that says, say, if it's 10 units of apartment, you have one vehicle parking, one EV charger. That's the main thing. I can have suggestions about changing it. I don't know how those suggestions would be implemented if you pass this. This has been a key peeve of Commissioner Peter Lehman. I think that in the times that he has tried to bring this up, he has been repeatedly shut down. He's been given false information. The council has been given false information about the situation. If, I think it sends a message to the community and the world if we have electric vehicle chargers or not. Right now, we do not. Even if the conduit for future electric vehicle chargers is inserted, it improves the situation. So there's, there's many tiers. It can be the full charger, it can be the wiring and the amperage for the chargers, or it can just be the conduit. In any case, I think there's a lot of room for improvement there, and it would send a good message. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred.
Good evening, Colin Fisk with CRTP. Since the topic of the plaza was brought up, I do want to point out that CRTP worked on that issue, as you all know, for many years. The language that was proposed doesn't commit to anything, it simply allows the possibility of considering closing all or part of the plaza to cars at some point in the future, and that recommendation really reflects a lengthy public process, including recommendations from the Plaza Improvement Task Force to consider that. So I would encourage you to include that, that just allows you to consider it in the future, depending on the circumstances, and allows you flexibility without having to go back and amend the General Plan. That said, when the General Plan update started several years ago, I'll admit that I was most excited about the Gateway Plan, and that is still really exciting to me, and I'm really proud that the council just adopted it. But as the documents have developed, a lot of the best policies in the Gateway Plan, from the parking reforms to policies that prioritize safer and healthier streets and more climate-friendly transportation, to policies that promote infill development and reducing the potential for sprawl, have really been incorporated into the General Plan as well so they can apply citywide. And so this updated General Plan that you have before you, I think marks a real milestone for the city, a renewed and much strengthened commitment to safety, equity, health, and sustainability in transportation, which is my area of focus, but also in other aspects of the community. I appreciate the care that has been taken in reviewing the updated General Plan, both by this council, by the Planning Commission, other city committees, members of the community. And we've completed that review pretty much, and I think it's time for the adoption so we can get started on the important work of implementing all the new policies. So please do adopt that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
Good evening again, Gregory Daggett. For the benefit of our attorney, I would like to also bring up the January 10, 2022 meeting when the fire district was in here, and you can go to all the end of the video, but they stated that they didn't want to see anything over three stories from that point on, that Sorrel Place was a mistake, Plaza Point, you know, was an iffy one, too. So it seems like what was stated tonight, there's already another building that's going on. So that's the problem that I had with your findings, that it was a direct conflict with that, and it seems like we're going out on a limb putting the city council, I mean, it's so outside there that, you know, I don't know what would happen if something would go wrong, because I think a jury would look at this and see what they said that's on camera and, you know, not be too favorable to the city. So you've already made a decision on that. I'd also like to point out that was a statement that was just made that these fires are rare. Well, thank you, Fred, for putting the, what, the fire in Miami, which was just a month ago. It looked exactly like Sorrel Place, it was an older building, but for someone that's lived in Miami, all the buildings there are concrete in the walls because of hurricanes and also the humidity. So that building, only wood was in the roof. And I'll point out, if you go to his video and his site, that they had four aerial trucks there, and they had, I believe, they said 40 units. I went by our fire district three hours ago, asked how many units that would be. That's probably about 120 personnel. And get this, no one has even thought about this one. What about the water volume? Because in that article that I read on Arcata 1, they, they were talking about how they had to pump from the Miami River, because they weren't going to get the volume out of the, out of the fire and from the street level there. I asked here, what, what would the situation here? So maybe if you, if you got the funding, if you got the truck, that you might have that one aerial truck shooting onto that fire, but any other vehicles, trucks that are on the scene, there wouldn't be enough volume for the water. So has anybody even thought about that one? It's like, you guys are like, have never lived in a large city probably that with mid-rises, and I'll have to tell you, you're missing a lot of points, and you know, they have a lot of resources because the other little, the cities next by, that they can, you know, have a lot of personnel, but there's not going to be enough personnel to rescue all these people. And also addressed from the standpoint of parking, if somebody has lived in these, you know, this is a big issue. You're going to fail in this, because people, it doesn't matter whether their backgrounds are, where they're coming from, they need to be able, even though I'm a walker, they want to have a parking, and this is going to fail in that area, I mean, a big time. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary, and I don't have a lot to say except appreciation for the process that the previous people who were involved in the previous General Plan, you know, took a lot of time, and it was a lot of teamwork of citizens, staff, and others spent a lot of time to create that, so acknowledging them in this is appreciated. But again, it's sort of the process, and what we really don't think about, and Alex, Stillman, you alluded to the future and your children, grandchildren and great-grandchildren, the world is going to be a whole lot different because of the climate. We're already at a tipping point and feedback loops on temperature rise and sea level rise, and so adaptation. So, you know, we can't like think like there's a static way of life. So the future is going to really be one of adapting and risk assessment for our survival. Tsunamis, earthquakes, fires, floods, you know, all those things, pestilence, you know, the biblical horrors that are facing us. But climate change needs to be first and foremost up there at the top, waving an earth flag for us all to remember what we are planning for the future for those who are going to have to try and live in it. I don't have specific issues with a lot of the General Plan, other than height kind of stuff, but people got to get out of their cars, you know, fossil fuels need to stop, and we're going to need to live a whole lot differently behaviorally. We can't be selfish about a lot of things. We've got to have a lot of shared components to how we live. So just, you know, remember Mother Earth, and she bats last, okay? So anything we're doing on this General Plan, you know, think about what's, what's happening on Mother Earth. And I just really can't wait to see what the future brings if I live that long, to see what changes are happening. Thank you.
Thanks, Joanne. Anybody else want to make public comment in public on the General Plan?
We have online.
Anybody online?
No online public comments.
All right.
Could I make a possible change? Okay, this is another crying baby other than Dilo in the room. I was just noticing that there were former people in committees that are here now. I spent three years on the Planning Commission, a lot of the work that I did came here later as a city council member, but I don't see that I'm on the Planning Commission acknowledgment page.
So maybe we want to review that and go over and see what...
I would also like to be listed as mayor then, I don't know. Like, you know, you're current. I mean, I feel like we're all getting...
No, they, they do mention that you and Meredith was on the Economic Committee and part of it. I did spend three years of my life developing...
Yeah, that's, that's an easy update, we can make that.
I mean, it's, it's okay, I just...
No, they're going to add you. They just said that. Okay.
I heard from my fellow...
You'll be okay, you'll be acknowledged there.
Councilmembers didn't, okay.
I'd like to also be mayor on there.
Are you sure? I would have to look and see if I was listed on Historic Glamour.
All right, let's bring this back. And do we have any other, but thank you, Kimberly, that was important, and we do really respect and are thankful for your work on the Planning Commission, so that is definitely important.
And there may be a couple others that are missing, so we should go back and double-check that, besides Kimberly.
But that's like minutia. Does anybody have any more like big changes or like changes to the meat of this that we'd like to make?
Well, is it possible to adopt a resolution tonight?
Yes, it absolutely is.
So I'd like to move to adopt a resolution, adopt Resolution Number 234-49, adopting the General Plan 2045 Comprehensive Update, except for the Gateway Area Plan.
I'll second that. All right, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Stillman, a second, tied, but I heard you first because you're sitting next to me. Councilmember Atkins Salazar, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion passes.
We finally get to vote on something that has to do with land use plan.
So thank you again, David and Jen and all the rest of your staff, thank you. And again, thanks to the public for their engagement, and, yeah, let's move on. Where are you going to go, David? You going to Disneyland?
That's right, I'm going to Disneyland.
Okay, are we all right to move on? I would like to move on. All right, so next we...
I'm sorry, I had a quick question.
Yeah.
Just because there was some other changes mentioned before the motion was made, did those need to be included in the motion?
They don't, those will be considered typographical in nature, because it has no substantive effect.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let us now move on to new business to conduct a public hearing to hear objections or protests from landowners listed on Report of 2023 LEAN, letter recipients of delinquent garbage account fees, and make revisions or corrections to the report as the council deems just, after which adopt Resolution Number 245-05, confirming the report of 2023 delinquent garbage account fees for the lean. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. We have a staff report from Environmental Services Director Emily Stinkorn.
Great, well, good evening. After so much decision-making, hopefully this will be a more smooth, or smooth agenda item. So this is an agenda item that comes to the council about every year from Environmental Services, and the goal is really to ensure that customers of our garbage and recycling services are paying for their services. So the city does require that all occupied premises have garbage and recycling services, and that is carried out by Recology Arcata, with whom we have a franchise agreement for garbage and recycling collection. And so tenants may obtain, you know, their own service, but per the Arcata Municipal Code, it's the responsibility of the property owners to ensure those bills are ultimately paid. So per, again, per the municipal code, every, bills are determined to be delinquent after... are determined to be delinquent after 60 days. And Recology sends letters bimonthly to commercial accounts, monthly to residential accounts, and also to the respective property owners, if that is different, once they become delinquent. So that's happening throughout the year. And then, at the end of the year, the city works with Recology to tabulate all of those potentially delinquent accounts. And then we work to make sure that hopefully Recology can be paid. And so in June, all those delinquent accounts received a letter that there was going to be a hearing tonight, and they could come and make any corrections or any protests, and that otherwise, that delinquent account balance would go as a lien on the property through the county auditor. So since the, this agenda item was put together, there have been a couple accounts that have been paid. And so you have received as a blue folder item, and also if it is needed, can make available to the public an updated final lien list. And so that totals 32,485. And so again, the motion would be, well, really, I suggest you open the public hearing, see if there's any corrections that seem reasonable, and then make a motion to adopt resolution 245-05. And then we would submit those to the county auditor August 1. Anyone on this list has until and through July 31 to pay these bills without having a lien put on their property.
Thank you so much, Emily. I will now open up the public hearing. Anybody on Zoom? I will now close the public hearing. Any final comments from the council?
She's just here to make sure everything goes, she's good. All right, this is her motion.
Well, if we haven't heard anyone wanting to do anything, you know, one of the things I always think, it's probably landlords versus tenants, or tenants not paying, the landlord says you pay, and then the tenants don't pay, or something of that nature. But I really think it's important to take care of your property. I think it's important to make sure you don't have diseases, or animals, or anything, and that really the landlords of these properties should be responsible for their garbage pickup. So the tenants, you know, I've heard stories where the yards are just full of garbage, because the tenants were supposed to pay for garbage, and they didn't. So I really wish that there was some other way we could handle it. But nevertheless, I will move for adoption of resolution number 245-05, delinquent garbage account fees 2023.
I'll second that. All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Stillman, and a second from Councilmember Atkins Salazar, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. All right. And now the happy and sad job of, do we need to, is he here?
Yeah. He's on his way. It's really great to have two city managers, yeah. He's representing Arcata with Senator Maguire right now.
Do we need to take a quick--
Nope, his text says almost here, so Kira will read slowly.
We'll start with the staff report. So item B is to appoint Merritt Perry as city manager, and number two, approve the agreement for employment city manager. Can we have a staff report from Human Resources Administrative Services Director Kira Fink?
You just made it in time.
How's, what's the score?
1-0, across.
Okay, and what inning are we in?
Uh--
All right.
All right.
Sorry, right back to you.
Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilwomen. I would like to first start with acknowledging that our current city manager, Karen DeMore, has given our notice in her intent to retire. And that led to, which was, of course, very sad news for many of us. But we did do an executive recruitment for city manager, and that recruitment led to many qualified candidates putting in their application. And the final candidate was vetted by department directors, community members, and the Arcata City Council. And after the vetting process and a thorough background, Merritt Perry was selected as the best individual to lead the city of Arcata and carry out the council's priorities and goals. Mr. Perry is a 30-year resident of Humboldt County and understands the area's strengths and challenges. He received his bachelor's in environmental resources engineering at Humboldt State University, now referred to as Cal Poly Humboldt, and went on to have a successful career as a registered civil engineer and project director for private engineering firms Spencer Engineering and GHD Incorporated. In 2014, Mr. Perry took an employment opportunity in the public sector as a public works director for the city of Fortuna, and was in this capacity for almost four years. He then was appointed as the city manager for Fortuna in 2018, and has served as their city manager for the past six years. Individuals who have worked for him have described Mr. Perry as a person with integrity, honesty, and a strong work ethic. They value the leadership he has provided them. Mr. Perry is recognized for his work on capital projects, partnerships with businesses, redevelopment of existing land, such as the Pacific Lumber Mill in Fortuna, and partnerships with key community groups, such as the return of the Wyatt ancestral territory on the Eel River to the Wyatt people. He demonstrated his ability to create the necessary partnerships to accomplish objectives, which are good for the city, but also good for the community at large, is a key attribute which led to his selection to be the next city manager for the city of Arcata. The municipal code requires that you appoint the city manager to be the administrative head of the government of the city, and to also approve his employment contract.
Thank you so much, Kira. That is pretty much why we chose Mr. Perry. I'm going to bring to the council, anybody have any questions or comments? I would just like to say, it was a really exhaustive search. I think that Merritt was obviously head and shoulders the best, per, the best candidate. And, you know, I'm really looking forward to the fresh perspective that you're going to bring. I'm looking forward to working with you. I'm really looking forward to talk about economic development and some of your solutions for some of the things that we are facing. We'll get to you next time, to you next, next meeting. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Would you like to say a few words, Mr. Perry?
I'll just say that I'm really excited about the opportunity to work with the city. I already know that they have an incredible staff. I've worked a lot with the department heads. I've worked with Karen. When I was going to Humboldt State University, I took courses that, you know, Arcata was really like a laboratory. There's a number of projects that we toured that the city was working on, whether it was daylighting creeks, or some of the innovative wastewater treatment. And I used to think that that would just be the dream job, when Marc Andre gave me a tour, or a class of tour, and he went through all the different projects, from some of the forest projects, to some of the creek projects, and so many different projects, it was like a dream job. And then, as I got into consulting and was able to work with the city on the Arcata Railway Trail Connectivity Study, which led to the Bay Trail North, a newer name, it was just an incredible experience to be able to work in the city. And every time there was an opportunity to work in the city of Arcata, we went after it. And it was just something that always really excited me to be able to work where I went to school, and I received my education, where I raised my kids. And so I'm just really excited at the opportunity to get to know the council better, and to hear the council's ideas, and to get to know the community. So thank you so much for the opportunity. I'll look forward to getting to know you all much better. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to, if there's any public comment, we'd love to hear it. We'd love to have you. Welcome, Mr. Perry.
Welcome, new city manager, hopefully. Mr. Perry, my name's Joanne McGary. You'll be seeing my face and hearing my voice and learning about my point of view about this community, where I've lived for 12 years. I just am sort of curious about the process in terms of saying that members of the community were involved in the selection process. And unfortunately, I wasn't one of them. But I look forward to moving along in the future to learn how you will help us move Arcata into the future. So I just wanted to say, miss you, Karen, and congratulations, and have a good time, and look out for me on a regular basis. So thank you.
Fair enough. Thanks, Joanne.
I want to acknowledge Karen DeMore for her great service over these years, both as city manager and prior to that, and want to acknowledge the search team that selected Merritt Perry. It goes without saying, perhaps, but I'll say it, everyone I've talked to is looking forward to Mr. Perry as a city manager, without any qualms whatsoever. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred.
Congratulations on your selection, Gregory Douggett. I hope some of the things that I have addressed for the last two years that haven't been dealt with, that with some new eyes, that we could maybe figure out some of those problems. And one of them--
Please address us, I'm sorry.
Pardon?
Can you talk about--
Okay. And the problems that we've, we've had that I've talked about for two years, noise with vehicles that have taken liberty to make their cars as loud as possible and violate our state laws. And it's a problem that finally, everyone was on board at the very end here, after two years of being very persistent, and, but nothing has been done about it. And so I'm hoping you can look at the resources and figure out how the police can actually take action and do something about it, because I'm kind of done talking about it. I'd like to see some action there. Another important issue that I brought up is public safety from the standpoint of vehicles that are speeding and also killing people, injuring people. I think our last, even our last meeting, I brought this up, that we're number one in DUIs in all of, all of the US. And since, since I made that statement, we had, I think, two extreme, two accidents, the Grange, where a death, another one up by the market here, they flipped over. And then on K and 6th Street, I think I went for a walk that night, and the car was flipped over there, too. So I think this is, what's been reported is just the tip of the iceberg of what has been going on. We don't have any, we had, and I asked for data for a couple of years, and we finally got some really vague data, but it doesn't even count all the vehicles that get told that are parked on the streets, that they cross over the bike lanes. So this is a super serious problem, but we're not addressing it, and I haven't seen really any change. It seems to be getting worse. But it's hard to take, that's my own opinion, because we have no data on it, and no one seems to want that data. And I think we need to, like, really focus on some of these things. So welcome, and--
Congratulations, again.
Thank you, Greg. Do you have anybody online that wants to make it? Okay.
Well, I would love to make a motion to appoint Merritt Perry as city manager for the city of Arcata, effective August 19, 2024, and to approve the agreement for employment city manager.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, bittersweet.
And I'll add, Merritt, that was probably one of the nicest Lost Coast Outpost comment sections I have ever seen. So--
Except for the one where Karen was retiring, that was pretty nice, too.
Yeah. So you're, you know, I think people are excited.
We're, we're very excited. We look forward to it. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Is that already? Sorry. We have a motion by Councilmember, Councilmember Atkins Salazar, second by Vice Mayor. We just wanted to make really sure. Are you sure? Okay. Let's move on to oral and written communications. The city council values your comments. The public comment period allows people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss nor take action on items not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements. If you are in person and wanting to give public comment, please line up at the podium. Please raise your hands if you're on Zoom webinar, or press star nine if you're on the phone and you would like to make public comment.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary, and I'm speaking at the end of the meeting for three minutes, because currently we have to make a choice. Where in the past, this particular point in the triangle of power of our city used to have a lot more voice during the meetings. And I'm going to try to get used to it, or challenge it, I'll have to see. But one of the things I've requested because of your decision to go ahead and let the appeal go through the courts in regards to the earth flag that the citizens voted to have on top of the flagpole, is not going to be done, and the flag will not be sitting on the top of the flagpole. We have an earth flag over there. The people's podium, it would be wonderful if we could have the earth flag there, here, so that we're reminded that we're thinking about this all the time. So we pledge allegiance to that flag. There's a California flag, there's an earth flag, but maybe just rearranging the furniture is an idea. I was walking up to campus a few days ago, and this was on the ground in the street, because it had blown off. It is one of the things on the light poles, I guess, the light poles, the green and gold corridor. And I went to go up to campus to see about who to give it to, but all the doors were locked, so I couldn't do any of that. I then brought it down and thought, hmm, if the Cal Poly campus gets to have little banners on the flagpole, maybe earth, until the court makes a decision about the flagpole, we could potentially complement on the other side of the flagpole, some earth banners. And I think, as I shared with you earlier, the people in the community who see me walking around with my earth flag really like it. And maybe they'll like it on our poles. And so maybe there's a little bit of ARPA money left for that. So I wanted to say that. And finally, I'm thinking a lot about the history of this place, and the people who were here before, and what they do in making decisions about our community and all that. And I got this little purple band that says, honor our elders. And maybe it's time for Arcata to think about an advisory committee that we could call a council of elders. So there'd be people who have institutional memory of this place, whether serving on government, being staff, or just longtime gadflies, thinking about having a council of elders, so that we can talk to. They don't have voting rights or anything like that, but they have what a lot of new people to the community or on the dais could maybe benefit by. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Joanne, thank you for getting that banner. Perhaps you could give it to Karen, and we'll get it back up, or to Emily, and we'll get it back up to the university. Thank you.
She wants an award for that.
An award.
$50. I'm going to talk about the state of public engagement, because starting with the Planning Commission, they even, they asked me about this, but there's nobody showing up anymore from the standpoint of in the audience and on Zoom. And they're, they're a little confused on that, but I gave them a hint. It's just everybody gave up, because when you invest two years of your life, I mean, I know Fred has, I have, and basically what you get from it is, yes, they do listen, yes, they do have meetings. But when they don't ever incorporate anything you have to say into what they're going to pass on to you, you know, obviously, you're going to be frustrated, and you're, you're going to give up. So you can take, you can come to your own conclusions, what an empty chamber and nobody on Zoom is, but that's my conclusion. And part of it is actually your fault from the standpoint that early in this process, that you actually gave them directions to change all their special, their regular meetings to special meetings. So we had month after month after month. And I remember the first time you did it, because, you know, we, I yelled back, this is like Mother Russia, you know, it's like, you know, you, you spend all this time, and you read, read the agenda, and you're supposed to be part of the game, is you're supposed to respond to things on there, and all of a sudden, the rules have changed. Sorry, you can't do that anymore, you know? Goes on for months and months and months. Finally, a few women call in, and when it's almost done, this is like July, and it's like, it's about gone, and they say, you know, this is so, this is illegal, this is, and then we have David instantly saying, I would highly recommend you change it back to regular meetings. And what was a regular meeting? They changed it to 5:30, so they changed it to 5:30. It's 5:30, and it's a-- You know, it's a regular meeting again. So that's my example of how you like turn people off. And it's the truth. And I would also say that these new rules now, from the standpoint, you know, you have to-- If you have to make a decision. Do you want two minutes in the beginning? And, I mean, how many people are going to wait through all of this for three minutes at the end? So you are not encouraging, you know, more people to be here. My prediction is that this chamber is going to be empty next. And so I'm just giving you some feedback of, I don't know whether you didn't like the criticism. I mean, that's part of democracy. That's how we make ourselves better. That's how we make plans better. And it seems like you're limiting, at my standpoint. And that's unfortunate. And it's kind of a sad state to see a population of 18,000 people and nobody ever showing up. So that's my advice. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Good evening, council. I'm Fred Wise. I'm not going to speak on the Gateway process or the general plan process. I will echo somewhat what Gregory Daggett said, that it has been surprising for me over the two and a half years what small numbers of people from the community have come to the meetings. There are certain hot-button topics that have come forward, but in general, it hasn't been that way. When I started ArcataOne.com, it was distribute information, originally better maps, so that people could see it. And people read it. But again, there's a real lack of participation relative to how things were 20 or 30 or 40 years ago. We can credit a lot of things, but among them, in many ways, as much as I value the work of the Community Development Director and how he's pulled this together, he has often not said things that are truthful. He's often not kept his promises. This is exemplified in the specific directions that the Planning Commission gave to the Community Development Director about a meeting at the-- You know, with the Arts Council and the people. And he went there and didn't do what the commission asked to do. More than one-third of the people in the room walked out of the room after the agenda was announced, including the owners of the Creamery Building, Brian and Lisa Finnegan. I spoke with them about it. It's-- There's been many causes for what I regard as a small amount of public participation. But the lack of what I call truthfulness and the presence of deceit, I find intolerable, including mischaracterizations or misspeaking to the planning commissioners and to the council. That said, this has been the strangest two and a half years of my life, and I never thought that I would get as involved as I did. I think we have a better plan. If you remember, the original inclusionary zoning that was proposed was 5%. Now it's something reasonable. There've been many, many good improvements over the last two and a half years as a result of both public input and the council's input and the committees and commissions' input. So thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Do we have anybody online? Oh, my goodness. All right, let's talk about dates of future meetings. August 7th, council meeting at 6:00 p.m. in the council chamber.
And we have it again on August 21st. We have a council meeting.
Yep, we sure do. Okay. Kimberly, would you like to adjourn for us? Go ahead.
I just was hoping we could do a moment of silence for the loss of four Valley West North Arcata community members in the last month and a half. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, everybody. And we're adjourned.